Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August 17th Planning Commission meeting. Would you please all stand for the plate?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we missing somebody?
Yeah, he had to go to the bathroom.
Okay. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
I will.
Mr. Hardy?
Here.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Tuckfield is gonna be absent, he's stuck in traffic, I believe, is that right?
Yeah, he said he'd probably be here a quarter or two.
Okay.
So he's on his way.
All right.
Sounds good. Mr. Provazano?
Here.
Mr. Shudo?
Here.
Mr. Spataforo?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Bentley?
Here.
Okay. We have a quorum.
Mr. Chairman, if Mr. Tuckfield doesn't show up and make a motion, we exclude him from any and all roll call votes at this time, if not, we can change it.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Shudo?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, approval of previous meeting minutes. I move. Okay, I think we received them today, if I'm not mistaken. Go ahead, Mr. Bentley.
I've reviewed them, unless there's other comments, I move to approve the minutes.
Support. Okay, motion by Mr. Bentley, supported by Mr. Provazano. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number five, approval of tonight's agenda. Any discussion?
I only had one comment.
Okay.
And I didn't receive a new agenda, is there a new agenda? Just the location of 6B being one quarter mile west of Romeo Plank, not east?
That's correct. There was not a new agenda released, but I did confirm the mailings and the advertisement had it listed correctly, but the agenda was a typo.
Right.
Are you making the motion, Mr. Bentley? With that correction?
If there are no other comments or corrections with that correction, I move to approve the agenda for tonight.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Shudo? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tuckfield's here, so...
Okay. And we'll just hold off a minute, folks, until our commissioner gets up here. This truly is orange barrel season, am I right? New business, preliminary plan Wellington West, permanent parcel 0816100023, located on the south side of 24 Mile, east of Romeo Plank Road, Section 16, PDI Enterprises LLC petitioner, Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission. So this item, this is a preliminary plan approval that they are seeking for Wellington West. As you mentioned, this is south of 24 Mile, and this one is a little bit east of Romeo This development, as you see laid out here, they do have a lot split proposed for the future, but this is a residential development with a number of units. They will have access from the development to the east, which I believe is Wellington, and then they're gonna be stubbing out the roads to the west for a future development. Fire access is provided with their access to the east, as well as the line you see there in yellow, which would be an emergency access route only along the detention basin. All lots do meet the dimensional standards, including the width to depth, as they will also meet those in the future, once they split that off, just for the record. And at this time, staff has no reason to deny this, and we are recommending approval, conditioned on the fact that this really can't be built until the development or the property to the east is developed, because they would have no access to get to it.
So is it right now the only way in and out is Berkeley Drive? Is that correct? Is that what you said?
That's correct.
And there's no Berkeley Drive?
Right, until that development comes in.
Gotcha. Okay. Commissioners?
Yeah, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a planner. So the access coming off of 24 Mile Road is only a fire safety access?
Correct.
Can you kind of just define that a little bit for maybe the residents?
Sure, so any development over 30 units or beyond a certain length, and I don't know that number off the top of my head, I want to say 1,200 feet or something like that, requires a second access, or that all units are fire suppressed or sprinkled. In this case, that access is off 24 Mile, along the detention basin, along the parcel that they'll be splitting off in the future.
So the developer won't be able to use that for construction road or nothing like that?
I think they could potentially use it during construction of the site, but once the site is built out, that will be solely for fire access.
Okay.
And at such time that the development further west of this, once those stub roads ultimately connect back out to another development that would connect out to 24, then that fire access would not be necessary any longer.
So it's basically temporary?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Spataforo?
Josh, could this particular phase, this particular agenda item we're considering tonight, could the parcel, does the parcel to the east have to be fully developed to go through the site review process before the Planning Commission and subsequently the board consider a final preliminary plan approval or a final plan approval?
The, I believe the development to the, are you talking about to the west or to the east?
To the east.
The development to the east, I believe, has an approval already. They're going, they're working with the Engineering Department. I think some of that may already be under construction, but until the roads are connected, then this one wouldn't be able to develop. But I don't think there's anything restricting them from going through this process now in anticipation of that road will be connected. Now, if the development to the east makes changes to their site plan and the location of that connection moves, then this development would have to change their plan as well.
But if they pave and connect the roads, even if there's no units that are constructed, you're fine with that as long as they proceed with this current site plan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Bentley?
Just a couple clarifications and another question. As it relates to the site plan and to the, the only access to this in the future will be, to the immediate future, I should say, would be from the east.
Correct.
And that access, is that sufficient for emergency vehicles to get out of there along with the drive, the only 10-foot wide drive going to 24 Mile Road?
It's, I believe that's 20 feet, 20 foot wide as required.
There's a dimension, there's, maybe it's conflicting dimensions, one says, oh, it does say 20 foot, there's 10 foot down below, but that's to the pond, and the radius, is that sufficient for the fire department to get onto the drive?
I believe so. The fire...
Schramm Drive?
Their only comment with regards to this was that the access road must be 20 feet across, as it's a requirement of the IFC 2015.
Okay. All right. There was also comments from the Engineering Department that were questioning the depth to width ratio on the lot touching 24 Mile Road, the split, and you had mentioned in your review that everything was okay as far as the ratios.
That's correct. So the three to one ratio is what we look at, so if you, if I can get this mouse up there, so if you look at the screen, you can see where they're proposing to split is kind of on an angle. From this side, it's obviously longer, and it's actually just over three to one, and from this side, it's just under three to one, but our ordinance measures from the middle of the lot, so if you go down the middle, it does meet the three to one requirement.
Okay, so that was in error, then, that comment?
I think they were just checking to make sure that it did in fact meet the three to one requirement. And that, that won't be split off until sometime in the future, or if an easement is granted, if it is split off, an easement would be required to maintain the fire access through there.
Okay. And there is no concern by the fire department for the two basically dead ends of the Schramm Drive towards the west, then?
Those will, will have to have a T turnaround at the end of those, that will actually be, again, in agreement with the neighboring property, because it will have to be constructed on that property.
Okay. Anyone else? Is the petitioner in the audience? Please come on up. Please state your name and give us your address, and is there anything you'd like to share? And for the gentleman in the red, there will be a public portion in just a minute, so...
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Salvatore Donna, 1055 South Boulevard East, Rochester Hills, Michigan, 48307. And no, at the moment, I don't have anything further to add, I believe Josh did a great job of explaining everything and answering questions thus far.
Anyone else have a comment?
I got a comment, just to the petition. So you're willing to wait until the property to the east starts developing to start your project?
Correct. Currently Wellington is the property to the east, the, as far as last time I drove by, the approach is in and construction is taking place, they're not far from getting, and what we're waiting for is the master deed to be recorded, so once that stub street, Berkeley Drive, is recorded with the county, then we're able to proceed. The other aspect of it is, after this meeting, pending approval, we would need to go through engineering phase, which is a lengthier phase than the planning, so by the time this, this development would be able to get to the point where we can move forward would be months and months from now, so, so yes, I'm definitely willing to wait for that.
And you're aware if they change anything...
Correct.
You're changing.
I'd have to come back here again, correct.
I'm just saying, it does happen, things do happen, so as long as you're aware of that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. At this time, I'd like to, I believe we have somebody that would like to speak, so I'd like to, a motion to open it to the public?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver?
Supported.
Supported by Mr. Shudo at 643. Sir, if you'd like to come up to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Bruce Haley. My address is 18888 24 Mile Road. I'm actually the guy that owns the property to the west, that apparently somebody's gonna build a turnaround on, which I wasn't aware of, but, but the reason why I'm here today, and I guess we can address that too, but the reason why I'm here today is because that I'm a little concerned about, about that fire lane. My son, we've, we've lived there for 50 years, my wife was born there, my wife's dad was born there. In any event, my son has a, has a house on the farm as well, he's about, I'm gonna guess 10 or 12 foot from where that, no, where that fire department right away is gonna be. We don't really have a problem with the fire department, because they will probably never use it or once, but I can see where, and there was some, something said about construction. Well, obviously, if they're gonna, that will be the direct route rather than go through the sub, it'd be so much handier for, for the trucks and, and the backhoes and the concrete to take that, because that's a direct route. Again, that's probably where all my son's bedroom window is on that side, that's probably, like I said, 10 or 12 foot, the property line is 10 or 12 foot from, from his window. I think that's a concern. The second concern would be that, you know, you know, as farmers, we struggle with, with the population in the township. Hardly, hardly a month goes by that we don't have some damage because of trespassing, and I could see where, by the way, that, that fire lane would go directly right into my field. And I, and, and if it's, if it's available for anybody to use, if it's there, people will use it. You know, there's a lot of vandalism, or just a lot of joyriding, you know, in this. So I don't, so I guess I would question, how would you restrict that to a fire lane? And can we restrict it to a fire lane superseding the construction traffic? I guess that, that's, I guess that's something I would request, because at first, I thought it was said it would be just for fire, but then somebody did mention, and I don't remember who it was, it would be for construction as well. They had, they had also mentioned a turnaround that somebody's gonna need, yeah, you know, there was, actually, the guy next door just talked to me a few days ago, and he wanted to know when I was gonna sell, and I said, when I, after I take my last breath, last breath, he said, "Well, let me know first." I kid you not, okay? Yeah, and by the way, that's when, that's when that 40 will be sold, I'll have, me or, and my wife will have to take her last breath before that's sold. There's also, that property line shares a culvert over the drain. I can only imagine that they're probably gonna have to dig the drain out, I wouldn't be surprised up to, probably up to the property line, whether they do or not, it doesn't matter. The culvert right now is, as near as I can figure, 10 foot on their property, 10 foot on my property. That was, that's the, that's the middle of the lane, and, and so I, I guess I have a concern, I need access, they're gonna put, I'm sure they're gonna put, they're gonna put a different culvert in, carry the 20 foot for the, for the, the fire department right away. So I guess what I just request is that they take my culvert, and I'm glad he's here, because I'm sure him and I could, could probably work that out, they can just take, make sure and take that culvert and move that over to 10 foot. I certainly don't wanna, I don't wanna go on his property, I'm sure he doesn't want to go on mine to have access, so, so that's the only thing I would ask, and again, I suppose he would be the one to ask rather than you guys, but, but I hope you, I hope you understand my concerns, and I would appreciate it if, 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 again, if, if, if him and then you guys, although it sounds like you guys have the, have, have the authority over the fire department lane. So I guess I'm, I guess I'm hoping that, that that can be restricted, I understand if you need it, that can be restricted to fire department, I don't know, how would you restrict it? Could there be a temporary, or could there be, I don't know, even signs, fire department only, and again, keep the construction out? That would be my concern. All right, thank you, thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Yes.
Anyone?
Bruce.
Okay.
He did not give his address.
Oh, sir, could you come back up? You did not give your name and address, and we need that.
He gave his name and your address.
Oh, you did. Well, we need your name.
Bruce Haley.
Bruce Haley.
Bruce Haley, okay. Yeah. And I'm going for a hearing test on Monday, so...
No, no, I'm honest, I've been around too many trappings.
Yeah. I got, yeah, I know.
I think we both have that.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? All right, then at this time, I'd like to close the public portion. So moved. By Mr. Shudo, supported by Mr. Oliver, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, do we have a motion on the preliminary pant, plan for Wellington West?
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Other communities I know, they often have a metal or a steel type of a lock gate for fire lanes, I'm wondering if the township ordinances or something would allow that for this type of thing, since it's only for emergency access only, an infrequent use area by the fire department?
Yeah, I think we, we do have other places where emergency gates, access gates are in place.
Is that something that could be considered for this site plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Guess, maybe you...
Mr. Oliver?
Let the petitioner speak in.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Haley, thank you for your comments, I definitely appreciate them. As far as the fire department, I had met with the road commission, because this approach is gonna be off 24 Mile Road, and with meeting with them, they absolutely do not want this approach to be noticeable or accessible by just someone driving by, so it's gonna be very, it's gonna be very minimal, it's not gonna be a grand approach where cars will be invited to drive in, it'll be something that maybe just the fire department or possibly DPW would, would know about, as far as that's concerned.
Would you be open to a gate or a chain or something like that?
Sure, yeah, definitely be open to that, I know we gotta conform with the width, and, and there'll be easement on that, of course, so that way it carries with the land, but yeah, that would be fine as well. I mean, I, I don't want people driving through their, while, while this is under construction development anyways, so, yeah, that would be fine as well.
And would that be your access when you're under construction in a few months?
Well, ideally, we're probably gonna be gearing everyone through Wellington, because that site will also be under construction, so I think a lot of the delivery trucks, whether it's wood, bricks, trusses, they'll be used to coming through Wellington. I don't think many construction traffic workers, materials will go through that access drive, only because they'll, they'll be used to the site to the east, but maybe in some cases, at this point, I really, really can't, really can't say, I really don't know.
Okay, fair enough.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
To the petitioner, would you be willing to sign that? You don't put signs there, no construction, because as Mr. Haley stated, 10 foot from a house is pretty close, when you start talking cement trucks and heavy equipment?
Yeah, I, that'd be totally fine, I think, I think that's very respectable to put that in, and especially with that site next door being under construction, not if, not an existing, if it was a subdivision that's been around for 10, 20, 30 years, then I totally wouldn't want, totally understand, wouldn't want trucks driving through there, but since it's new construction, they're gonna have that sort of traffic, I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anyone else, Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, I just mentioned it, I'm not sure if it'd be productive, but it seems like this, if we're interested in only having this be emergency traffic, this might be a situation for a knock box or something of that nature, would probably be more effective than a sign or something like that, so, just a, just a suggestion, that'd be almost true.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion? Anyway.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plan for Wellington West, permanent parcel 0816100023, this will be based on the recommendations from the Planning Department, and also with the understanding that this parcel would not be developed until the parcel to the east allows it to be accessible with the road, per the recommendation by the planners.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Tuckfield?
I would, I would second that with the addition, if you may, of the, the deterrent to use the fire access road as a construction access.
I'm acceptable to it, I'm just not sure if it's appropriate to put it on, to put it on the preliminary plan. I agree with you, I think it should do that, I guess I would ask...
Well, so they can develop it when they do the, the plan, they can take that into consideration, I guess, so we would see it the next time it comes to, to, before the commission.
Ben, I guess, is it okay to add that in on the preliminary plan?
I don't see that as a problem, the saying, in that the future plans will have, and the condition that future plans will include the gate and knock box that you discussed on the fire lane to deter public access.
Okay.
In accordance, in accordance with the, with the ordinances.
Okay, then I would, then I would amend the motion to also include that future plans would include a gate and a knock, knock box on the emergency entrance as it is acceptable by the ordinance.
Okay. So we got a motion, we got a second, by Mr. Bentley. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Provazano?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
And Mr. Spataforo?
Yes.
All right.
All ayes.
All ayes. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, next item on our list is a site plan and a special land use for Give 'Em a Break, permanent parcel 0817300015, located on the north side of 23 Mile Road, quarter mile west of Romeo Plank Road, Section 17, Brandon Ott petitioner, Mr. Box.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is on 23 Mile, near Romeo Plank, this is for the Give 'Em a Break development, I know Mr. Tuckfield has seen this a few times, as they've been in for some variances. They're, they're seeking both site plan and special land use, so I'm gonna go through both of those, but they do require two separate votes at the end. So the special land use requirement has to do with the fact that they have more than 1,000 square feet of outdoor storage area. As you see on the, the plan there, they were granted some variances for the north portion of the storage area to be asphalt millings, and the south portion be completely paved. Typically, the ordinance would require the whole thing to be paved, but because of some tracked vehicles and other things, they were granted a variance to only pave a portion of the storage area, as well as the six-foot-high chain link fence on the property line to the east, as, that is a residential property at this time, though you'll see it on your agenda in a few weeks to be rezoned. Technically, it would require a masonry wall, but they did get a variance to have a screening of chain link fence in place of the masonry wall until such time that it be developed as residential. So with regards to the special land use, the things that you guys would need to consider is whether or not it's of, you know, size and location character that's harmonious with the adjacent properties, which it is surrounded on, on most sides by industrial, but there is the R1S property that is to the east, and again, that, there is actually an application in now for that to be rezoned that you'll be seeing in a few weeks. It needs to be of such nature that vehicular and pedestrian traffic should not be more hazardous than normal, and we do not think that's the case. Designed with respect, again, with, with respect to location size and intensity, this is a building that already exists, they're just seeking to use the rear part of the property for storage in addition to the building itself, with, again, 50% being paved, 50% being asphalt millings, so it does kind of fit in with the industrial area of, of 23 Mile. The proposed location and height of buildings and structures, you know, should not interfere with adjacent land and buildings, again, the building already exists, the structure itself already exists, the only thing they're adding is fencing and outdoor storage, the outdoor storage cannot be taller than the fences that are installed, and it should relate harmoniously with the physical and economic aspects of adjacent land use. Again, it doesn't really have any impact on the prevailing shopping habits or convenience of other local needs, this, they're, they're adjacent to industrial, and likely will be adjacent to either commercial or industrial on the east side as well in the near future. And the proposed use is designed, located, and planned that it shall be operated in such a manner that public safety and welfare will be protected. Again, this is an existing facility, we don't really see that any public safety or welfare would, would be endangered, so long as they meet all the ordinance requirements. And then lastly, the proposed use shall not be detrimental or injurious, injurious to the neighborhood, and again, it's largely an industrial neighborhood, as is, so I don't think it really impacts the, the neighborhood in that manner. With regards to the site plan itself, the front and rear setbacks have been met, again, the east and west setbacks were, have some, some variances that were granted on their March 4th meeting, at the ZBA. No additional parking is required on site, they do have sufficient parking, the six-foot-high wall, again, a variance was received on June 3rd for that, so they're gonna be putting up a chain link fence. Should the, the neighboring property not be rezoned and be developed as residential in the future, because it's currently... Should the, the neighboring property not be rezoned and, and be developed as residential in the future, because it's currently vacant, at that time, they would be required, uh, to, to place a masonry wall. And at this time, staff has no real reason to object to these, uh, requests and thus we're recommending special land use and site plan approval.
Okay. Is the petitioner in the audience? Come on up, please, sir. Please state your name and address for us.
My name is Brandon Ott.
Well, get, get to the mic first, so.
Brandon Ott, five three five eight eight Oak Grove, Shelby Township.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to add?
I think Josh did a good job there.
Josh always does a good job, yeah. All right, commissioners, questions, comments? Mr. Oliver?
To the petitioner, uh, roughly what, what's your idea of storage out there?
Uh, they're going to store, uh, like, uh, construction barrels, uh, barricades, uh, arrow boards. They got a couple pieces of equipment to move that stuff around the yard, maybe five or six, uh, trucks, smaller, like medium duty trucks. About it.
Okay. And so there's going to be no fuels and oils and
No.
tanks of that sort?
No.
Okay. And is there, I, I'm trying to look at your printed, do you have a hard surface to that area?
Uh, right now, yes, there is.
Okay, all right. And that's it?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bentley?
It was noted that the, um, uh, the chain link fence in lieu of the, uh, concrete, uh, wall, related to the, uh, the east property, um, be, uh, be provided and it be as high as anything stored. Can that be clarified as to whether or not it has to be stored to the height of the trucks that are being stored there as well? Or just the barrels and, and such, the barriers?
Just the barrels, the things that they're stacking cannot be higher than the fence.
Okay. And that is a screened fence, correct?
Yes.
I think that's all I had.
Okay.
Check my notes. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All right. At this time, I'd like to, um, open it to the public before we vote, vote on the special land use or the site plan. So I need a motion for that?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Oliver?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak at seven oh two? Please give us your name and address, and just so you know, you have, uh, a four-minute limit.
My name is Sal Leeny. I live on eight seven seven Wild Brook Lane, Lake Orion, Michigan. Uh, I represent, uh, Shore Investments, which is the owner of the property to the east of this parcel. I wasn't sure if, you know, this parcel that's in question tonight was next to ours or not, because I didn't get any additional information. I called the city and the city never returned my call, but, uh, now I see that it is. Uh, as far as the outdoor storage, is that, that's something that at this time is permitted under the present zoning? What, what exactly are they requesting right now? Just that, that the, uh, storage not be paved? Or are they requesting a variance?
And, and we'll take all the comments and then at the end, we'll answer all the questions. So.
Okay, my, my issue is that, uh, right now, the property next door is zoned residential. And, uh, I underst, you know, I, I am aware that it's in the process of being rezoned, but until that happens, we don't know that, whether that will be rezoned or not. And I'm concerned about, you know, if, if, if the property next, you know, the, if, uh, our property will be rezoned and as they, uh, I understand they agreed to put a, uh, concrete wall. I don't have any objection to that, although if, if the property next door is not rezoned and that's going to be developed as residential, I have, I have objections to a concrete wall, depending on what kind of concrete wall is. I, I, I would not like to see of just a plain concrete wall that look more like an industrial than a residential. So, is there, uh, I, I understand you said that the rezoning on the property next door that we own is scheduled, uh, in the near future. Is there, uh, some way to postpone this, this approval or not approval, the, 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 um, the voting on this one until that one is resolved? Because if that's rezoned, then I don't have any issue. But as long as, as long as our property is zoned residential, I, I'd want to have some more assurance of, uh, I want to have an assurance that this concrete wall will go up and I would like to see some, some styles of what the concrete wall is going to look like.
One minute left.
Okay. You have about a minute left and then we'll ask if there's anyone else that would like to speak.
Uh, the other objection I would have, you know, as far as, uh, uh, you know, if the outside storage is permitted, you know, obviously I don't have anything to do about that. If it's not permitted, I do have objection to outside storage, especially if the pavement is not, uh, the, the, the flooring is not paved because it would create dust, it would create noise, it would create, uh, I don't know what kind of storage they have, you know, whether it's steel boxes or what, but, uh, that, if it's not allowed, I have an objection to that because you, you know, I wouldn't want to live next door to somebody that's moving things around all day long. That's all.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Anyone? Well, then at this time, I need a motion to close the public hearing at seven oh seven.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Spatafora?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, Mr. Box will come to you.
Sure. So I, I guess to answer the first question, outdoor storage is permitted in, in industrial areas. Uh, the special land use that they're seeking is for outdoor storage space that exceeds one thousand square feet. So, even if the special land use were not approved, they could still store outdoors. It would just have to be in an area less, uh, than one thousand square feet. Uh, one of his other comments with regards to dust, um, it, it was mentioned at ZBA and, and I don't know if Mr. Ott can comment on that, but there was, uh, some type of spray that they would be using on, on the asphalt, um, millings to, to keep that dust to a minimum. And then just to clarify the, the last thing, so they're not required to build a masonry wall unless it develops as residential. Uh, so just, even if the, the rezoning, uh, that's coming in the future wi- with regards to the neighboring property, even if that does not get approved, until there's actually a structure, until it's developed as residential is what the variance was granted for. So it still wouldn't require the masonry wall until a residential development comes forward on that property. I'll also mention, I know at the end of, uh, last planning commission, I mentioned we're going to be doing some township initiated rezoning on some R1S parcels all across the township. That is one of those such parcels. So were the, the rezoning request that they're asking for, uh, which I believe is commercial, not be approved, it's a, it's a parcel that the township is going to initiate rezoning on regardless, uh, to remove the R1S from our, our zoning code. So it would likely come back for you a second time anyways, even if the first one was not approved.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anything really good? Anyone? Okay. Do we have a motion? Oh, go, Mr. Bentley, go ahead.
I do. Um, the one concern he had, uh, it sounded like, um, if it did remain residential, per se, uh, and, and would require then a masonry wall. He doesn't like masonry walls. Um, is, is there, uh, can you elaborate on what standard concrete walls, uh, are required and if there's anything we as commission can do about what the finish or surface might be?
Now, let me take that one. Uh, no, the ordinance has basic standards for masonry walls. The applicant's always welcome to go above and beyond those standards. But if he meets those standards, there's really nothing the commission can do at this point. The ZBA already put the condition in place that a masonry wall, meeting the ordinance has to be in effect. So when he comes forward with a site plan, as long as it meets ordinance, it will get approved.
And it is a masonry wall, not, it doesn't specify whether it's brick or block?
No, it'd be masonry wall, it specifies.
I'm sorry?
It specifies masonry wall. It could be a brick wall, it could be a block wall, it could be a poured.
Not, not poured concrete?
No, well, the panels aren't allowed. Poured concrete is not allowed. It's got to be block or it's got to be.
Be a continuous footing.
Yeah, continuous footing.
Gotcha.
Okay. I also believe, Mr. Uh, Mr. Skurdo, can correct me if I'm wrong. I think we do have a portion in there specifically with regards to the cap as well, uh, which is one of the oddities to our ordinance. I think it has to be a cap with a certain percentage on top of the...
Yes, yeah, walls do have, require a cap, aid in drainage and things.
Correct, okay.
And, and to that, Mr. Bentley, just, uh, uh, the perspective, I guess, from the ZBA was at the time we were looking at it, the ordinance does require a block wall. Uh, it's generally considered for sound and, and noise and light, uh, light abatement. Um, the, uh, petitioner presented that, considering the, the property was vacant and expected to be changing, uh, that it would be a hardship for them to have to put up a block wall, um, when they're separating from landscaping. Uh, the exception was put in that if it did develop residential, that it would need to meet residential standards is basically what it is. So the block wall would be the residential standard, uh, if no variances were given. So I think that was the logic there, uh, and why the block wall is stipulated, because that's what would be typical.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield.
I got one question for Josh. So Josh, then the properties at the east, did you say they've, they're coming in or?
They've already submitted an application. Uh, I believe we've already sent out notifications and it, it's either on September seventh or the September twenty-first agenda already.
For, uh, industrial?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial. So then they wouldn't need a block?
That's correct.
Okay. But the applications, it hasn't come to us yet, obviously.
Correct.
But it's making its way through.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we need a motion on the special land use. Would anybody like to make that motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Oliver?
I'd make the motion on the special land use for the Give Them A Break, uh, permanent parcel number oh eight one seven three zero 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 one five.
Support.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Provinzano. Mr. Bentley, would you please call the roll?
I will. Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Provinzano?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
And Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, motion passes. There are no nays. Site plan, we need a motion for the site plan for Give Them A Break.
Mr. Chairman, I also would make the motion to approve the site plan for Give Them A Break, uh, permanent parcel oh eight one seven three zero 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 one five.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Oliver?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Shudo. Mr. Bentley, call the roll?
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Provinzano?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Okay, we have all eyes. All right, next item on our list. Thank you, sir.
Thank you guys very much.
Next item on our list is conditional rezoning for Premier Academy. Permanent parcel zero eight two six three five one zero one one slash zero one two. Let's do this. Located on the northeast corner of Twenty-one Mile Road in Card, uh, section twenty-six, JS Capital Group, petitioner, Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Uh, as you said, this is the northeast corner, Twenty-one and Card. Uh, you see on, on the screen here. It's, uh, kind of a longer, narrow piece of property. Um, a little bit difficult to, to develop. It is currently zoned residential. They're going through conditional rezoning. I think we, we had our first two ever conditional rezoning at our last meeting. So I think, hopefully you guys remember that process. Uh, but they, they have set forth some conditions upon which they will develop this. So it's not strictly a R1 rezoning to, uh, community facilities where anything allowed in community facilities could be built. It's restricted, uh, based on the conditions that they're putting upon themselves. So those conditions, um, and I think a finalized version of this was, was sent around today. So I, I don't know, Ben, if, if you want to weigh in it after I'm done, if there's, if I'm missing anything that was changed. I don't think there was, but, um, that it, it will be developed as a daycare facility as set forth in the plans. Uh, their typical, uh, days and hours of operation are six thirty AM to six thirty PM. Enrollment would, would include a maximum of a hundred and eighty-eight students. Um, the building will meet all ordinance standards. Site plan review process will be followed with approval by the planning commission if needed. Variance procedures to the zoning board of appeals shall be followed. Uh, they did actually get a few, uh, variances, which I'll touch on in a minute. Pickup and drop-off areas will be located as required by ordinance. The exterior and interior play areas shall meet, uh, State of Michigan Administrative Code. Uh, that was one of the variances that they did receive. Uh, the township's, uh, play area requirements, uh, were a little bit, uh, we require more play area than what the state, uh, requires, uh, but it, the state only looks at outdoor play area and it doesn't take, and our ordinance doesn't take into consideration indoor play area, which they are providing that as well. Uh, so they, they came much closer to the requirements and they were granted a variance for that. Um, and then lastly, all legal requirements or parcel combinations shall be followed. Um, at this time, you know, our, our departments, uh, have really no reason to, uh, object to this request and therefore we're recommending approval of this conditional rezoning.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Is the, uh, petitioner in the audience? Come on up. Please state your name and address for us.
Good evening. Robert Kirk, nineteen five hundred Hall Road, Clinton Township, Michigan. I'm here with the, uh, both the petitioner and the property owner on this. This, as Josh said, this is a, kind of been a tough parcel. I've been familiar with it for ten, twenty years now. The, then with family owned, it's the old front farm. It's been cut up such because of the development on one side, the widening of the roads and the zoning. So it's a difficult piece. Through the years, different potential buyers have come in with different types of uses. A lot of them are much more intense. We didn't accept any of those kind of offers or brought them to you, but this, uh, use seems to really be conducive to this area. I think it'll be great with regard to the abutting residential in that it'll be kind of a quiet use. As Josh said, it's zoned R1. It really isn't conducive to a residential zone considering the size and location. Um, Angela's here from the user, um, potential user here, uh, explaining what their use is.
Hi, my name is Angela and I'm O. I'm one five five Romeo Road in Rochester. Um, I am the director of operations of all of our campuses. So this would be our fourth childcare facility, um, in McComb. Our first one here established.
Get you talking to the mic.
Yeah, we need you to talk into the mic. Thank you.
Our first one we established in two thousand nine in Oakland Township, um, and then opened additional facilities, Rochester Hills, Northville. Um, we do have programs from infants through pre-K and then we offer two types of curriculum, a Montessori and then also a traditional program. Um, so we are an academic-based childcare facility.
Okay.
We also have our architect here, Jeff, if there's any questions.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll hold off on, on them for just a moment. Um, commissioners, do we have any questions? For our petitioner?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Oliver?
On the plan, um, I'm looking for your, your playground.
On the north end.
I, I, is, is, I, mine's blurry here.
Charlie, if you look back, I, the site plan is the next agenda item for this. I was going to go through that separately, but if you look on the screen now, you can see the area in green is their outdoor, uh,
There it is, okay.
play area.
Right now, we're just doing rezoning, correct?
A conditional rezoning right now, correct.
I'll, I'll wait for that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I do have a comment.
Mr. Bentley?
Um, in, in some of the, uh, support work from your, uh, firm, it does talk about... In, in some of the support work from your firm, it does talk about there would be no additional noise or traffic. That wouldn't be, it wouldn't, wouldn't be worse than what, you know, residential area would be. But with 188 kids, not all of which would be outside at any one particular time, I would think maybe one or two classes at the most. Kids, kids make noise, you know?
So with our playground, the max that would ever be outside would be one classroom. So really, you would never see any more than 20 children out there. And playground times won't start until as early as 10 a.m., 9 o'clock. We've got drop off, off up until 9 o'clock when our program starts, then we'll start out our day with circle time, you know, some academic activities. And then starting at 10, the classrooms will stagger their outside time, you know, throughout 4 or 5 o'clock type of thing toward the end of the day.
Okay, I see. All right, is there any, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question, and I think this might be to Josh, but petitioners might want to chime in on this as well. We looked at this for parking spots a couple of weeks ago, and I didn't think this was a pertinent question then. But I, I would think that this is generating more traffic on a busy corner, certainly than, what, three or four or five, whatever the residential homes would be there. So it does seem like it's an increase in traffic. Are you comfortable with where the, where the drives are and the potential buffer space that we have for cars here? Obviously, this is the rezoning portion, but I think this is a rezoning pertinent question. I know when I look at it, I, I feel a little squiggly on it. It looks like it could be a problem, but I'm not, this is obviously not as much my expertise as yours. What's, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, with regard to the buffering, there is a masonry wall that will be put up that has additional buffering. I think they meet all the ordinance requirements for setbacks and buffering for this zoning category. The drive entrance is off Card Road, I believe, and they can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe they've approached the county, and the county would not allow an entrance off 21 Mile Road. So their only entrance is off Card Road, and I think it's already a difficult intersection. Yes, it's, it's tough to make some left-hand turns coming out of Kroger, and it'll probably be tough to make some left-hand turns coming out of this development. But they are staggered, as, as they mentioned, drop offs as early as 6:30, all the way up to, I think it was 9 or 9:30. So they are staggered quite a bit, most of, most of which is probably outside the morning rush hour, after the morning rush hour. So I, I think it would be about seven housing units. So if you have a couple workers in each house that go out at rush hour, it's probably not any more or less than what they're doing.
Okay, and, and I should, I should just clarify, I think I said buffer, I meant stacking within the parking spots, so my apologies on that. Considering the stacking, I know they talked about this at ZBA, how many, how many cars. But if you feel comfortable with it, that's, that's my biggest concern from the rezoning end is, is just the stacking out onto the road, so.
Yeah, I, I think there is, you know, some potential concern with stacking. Are they gonna stack, you know, all the way into the roadway? I guess we can never tell for sure, but they do provide parking spaces. Some parents are gonna pull up and drop their kids off, where others are gonna park and walk their kids in. So I, I guess I would defer to, to the applicant to what's the, the norm of how many parents walk their kids in versus how many queue up to just drop them off.
Okay, and if you could speak to that as well?
Chair, this is our fourth, will be our fourth location, and I think we've got a comparison with Rochester Hills. Same size building, smaller site, it works. We wouldn't be building this if it didn't work. We feel comfortable with the stacking, the way the traffic flows through, and the way the drop offs-
I can say in addition, we're not, when a lot of people think of the traditional elementary school kind of drop off and pickup, like he said, because it is as early as 6:30, you get a slow flow of kids, you know, all throughout that three-hour span in the morning. And typically, all of our kids are coming from right local, so we're not adding necessarily more traffic to the road. We're just, they're adding a stop on their way. You know, it's not generating more, it's these people who are leaving from the subs and coming in. But like he said, with our Rochester Hills campus, it's pretty identical to the Macomb. And it's got, I believe at max four to five max, just like this, for the stacking spaces. It's, you know, pretty constant. Parents in and out, we never see, we're on a very tight corner in Rochester as well. And we never see it backing out into the road. And if for some reason it did, you know, fill, parents always know protocol. There are gonna be a ton of parking spots in addition. Staff, staff members who can park along the back to leave those most front spots to parents. So we're not concerned with it overflowing into the road. We've never experienced that at our other campuses either.
And, and just to clarify, if I heard you correctly, did you say you typically would see like five or six cars stacking, was that what you said?
At our highest time, but, you know, if you pull up at any time, usually two, right around or in and out. You know, somebody's coming in, and somebody's leaving, and another one comes in. It's pretty steady. Maybe at our peak time, you would maybe see all five spots full. But that would be just at like the, you know, right before maybe the school day started at nine. But typically, no, we don't see an overflow, and if, if it was full, you know, parents do know protocol to park and walk in, so.
Very good. And then just one last follow-up on this, Mr. Box. If, and I'm not sure if this is appropriate for the site plan or not, but if there was to be some type of no-left turn sign there, is that something that is done by the county? Is that something we can recommend? How, where, where would something like that play into, to the flow of this?
Well, I think they would have the ability to put up a no-left turn sign on their property. Whether or not it was enforced, I think would be a county decision.
Is, is that something, well, I think that's a site plan question. I'll, I'll leave that for, I'll leave that for the next, the next set. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Bentley.
Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else?
There was a question, if I may, from the assessor, and I think it would apply here regarding the Lot 11. That is part of a platted residential subdivision. Is that an issue before we can, we can rezone? Can do a conditional rezone?
Well, that's something we definitely took a look at, and I think I'll defer to Ben to answer that, but we did look at that. Yeah, so the, these lots can be combined. Nothing in the plat which precludes the combination of the tax parcels here, there's no restriction in the plat.
But from, I guess what I'm thinking, it has to be, it has to be divided out of the other residential subdivision?
No, there doesn't need to be a plat vacation or amendment, because what we're doing is we're basically combining tax parcels. The plat can remain as is.
I see. Okay, that's all I have for this portion, thank you.
Mr. Spatafora? Yes, this is either to you, Ben, or to you, Josh, but the township engineer had recommended deleting paragraph number five of the conditional rezoning agreement. Has that issue been resolved, or has that been addressed in any way? And I'm not sure, I'd like to know exactly why he would recommend removing that. And that has to do with the time limit of-
Yeah, well, there's, there's been multiple variations of that. I think paragraph five regard, was regarding utilities before, that has been deleted from this version. So I, I don't, I'll look at this, but I don't, I don't believe that, that comment is prevalent in the latest draft.
I see, okay. That's all I have as far as this agenda item, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Spatafora. Anyone else? Do we have anyone that would like to make a motion on rezoning?
Do we want to bring this to the public?
Oh, yes, we do. At this time, I need a motion from Mr. Oliver at 7:28. Do I have a second? Supported by Mr. Provinzano to open the public portion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Come on up, sir.
Sean Connolly, 2178021 Mile. Couple comments. One, I was a little confused because my public hearing notice said it was being requested to change to O1. And CF makes perfect sense, that's for daycares, nurseries, and so forth. And I didn't understand why mine said O1, I never got a correction, and I didn't think I saw a correction. It's not on here, but CF obviously as much were acceptable to me. I do have a lot of concerns though about the site plan, honestly. And one of the things was 21 Mile, I'm kitty-corner, let me explain, my business is kitty-corner from there. I know the corner. I know how tricky it is getting out of Kroger, going north, it's impossible, there's accidents weekly. There would be no way to come east and go into there, there should not be access to 21, so I'm glad they already clarified that. But coming north to get into that parcel, it backs up. There is not two lanes for people to go, and there's people stopping all the time to turn left into Kroger, which is hard enough. There's people trying to go around, and anybody trying to get into that parcel is gonna be backing up, and it's gonna be a nightmare. And top of that, there are other facilities have this big rounded drop off area, which tends to be right in front, which sounds like this one is too. And there's gonna be people pulling up there. It's going to be an issue with backing up, it's gonna be an issue with access. I don't see any way they can do this without widening Card Road, putting in a deceleration lane or access lane there, and honestly making the turn lane go north way past where Kroger is, because right now, and widening the road. Because people are coming south, they're going east on 21 Mile, it is backed up in that turn lane the entire way, every day. People can't even get around to go south, you know, and then there's other people trying to pull out, and it's a nightmare. So obviously, no left turn should be allowed out of there, and I know they're gonna want that, because people aren't gonna want to go the other way. But turning left to go south out of there is gonna be impossible. There's no room, there's cars coming, there's the turn lane that's always backed up, and you can't get all the way over, it's, it's never available, it's never empty. So there's already enough accidents, I'm concerned about that. The other thing is, if they're putting in their round drop off thing like other facilities have, I think that would have to go around the back of the building. I think they ought to bring the cars further in from the north, bring it to the back, have the drop, drop off in the back, and then come back or something. Because if they're trying to put that on the front, I know that they're saying there's not a lot of backups, and there's not a lot of cars. But people aren't gonna wait and follow protocol. Look at the Starbucks everywhere, they're lined up into the streets, they don't want to wait, they don't want to get out of their car. And they can say, you know, it's throughout the day, 6:30 to 6:30, but 90% of the traffic or pickups, drop offs gotta be between 7 a.m., 9 a.m., and 4 p.m. to 6 p.m. That's the vast majority, and that's when it's gonna become more of an issue. So I don't have a problem with daycare, I'd love to see something like that go there. But with that road layout, it's gonna be a nightmare, it already is. And I have significant concerns about that causing more accidents and issues, backups all the way through the intersection. I think that was it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, do we want to comment, Mr. Box?
I gotta close the public hearing.
Okay, yeah, oh, thank you. We need a, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mr. Shudo at 7:32. All in favor?
Aye.
All, motion passes. Mr. Box?
Well, it certainly is a busy intersection, I think we, anybody who's driven there is aware of that. And it's probably even busier than normal right now with Hall Road under construction and 23 Mile under construction. So a couple of parallel routes are, are kind of choked off, which probably is making this a little bit busier than normal. But regardless, it is a busy intersection. Whether or not XL or DCL lanes or the extending, you know, a left turn lane is required, that, that's something that they will have to work with the county to resolve, that, that's not really something that the township has purview over.
I think one of the other issues, I think the comment about traffic is more pertinent to a site plan vote than it is to a conditional rezoning vote at this point. So it's a good comment, but I think if you hold that off on abeyance until you come up with a site plan issue.
Okay.
Right.
All right. We need to make a motion, did we do the rezoning yet? We haven't-
No.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I did have one quick question for Ben, just to make sure I understood. In here, we noted, it was noted 6:30 to 6:30. It was somewhat nebulous in the time. I'm not sure if that's, I assume that it's something that they put forward, but it wasn't a hard 6:30. Are, are we concerned about that? Is it, is it worth making it solid, or, or worth striking it all together if it's, if it's nebulous in the first place? I just wanted to make sure we were okay with that.
I'm sure, well, it's, the language is, is that it will be as follows.
Okay, I thought it was more nebulous than that.
6:30 to 6, 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. If there are conditions, or you want, there are strengthening of conditions that the planning commission would like to see. At any time during the hearing, they can request the petitioner to offer as a condition that strength, the strengthening of that condition.
If it's, if it's specific, that was my concern. I had notes in here that there was, that it was not, and I was wondering why. So I don't know if I, I might have an old version or I wrote a summary or something.
Well, the last version just says typical days and hours of operation will be as follows, 6 a.m. to 6, 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. That is the condition as offered by the petitioner, as understood by administration, and that's what was stated in the agreement.
So it, the, the way it is worded, and I just guess, I guess I would ask the petitioner, that is your understanding, is, is in, is, that's what you're offering? Is, is the verbiage typical hours would be?
That's correct.
If I can ask the question, not necessarily asking for strengthening, but I guess why are you mentioning typical instead of stating hours?
So we're 6:30 to 6:30.
Sorry, ma'am, if you could-
Microphone.
We're 6:30 to 6:30. Those are our hours of operation.
Typical may just mean typical on a normal work week, rather than if we're, it's a holiday or something, you know, New Year's Eve, we might be closing at 3. But typically, 6:30 to 6:30, Monday through Friday.
Okay, I, I guess I'm fine with it, I just, I don't know why we would have a clause in there typically. Or, I mean, if, if, if we, if, if we think it should be in there, I feel it should be, it is. And if it could be typically, well, maybe it's worth just not having it in, in there as a clause.
So, so are you requesting the, the petitioner to say, to change the condition to say, days and hours of operation shall be 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m.?
I guess, I'm, I'm not making myself too clear, I guess I would clarify. In discussions with the petitioner, they put that in because they felt that was something we wanted, or was that something they just put in? I don't have a preference. I'm just, I wouldn't typically expect hours like this, so I'm assuming it was put in there for a reason. If it was put in there for a reason, then I would, yes, I would request the petitioner if they would do that.
I would assume because it's a, next to a residential subdivision, and it also is not open on weekends, from what I understand. It's a weekday operation, correct? So I believe that they put that condition in there as further enticement to approve this conditional rezoning.
And I guess I would ask the petitioner, are you, are you willing to, to word that so that that would be ours?
Chair, we can strike to word typically.
I think what, if I may, I think what you're getting at is no earlier than 6:30 a.m. and no later than 6:30 p.m. As she mentioned, there may be occasions where they close at 3 p.m. or for a holiday.
That also would be fine, thank you, Mr. Box. Yes, I think that the clarification would be no earlier and no later.
Or if you had a snowstorm that came at 12 noon, and you had parents that called and said, "I'm doing my best to get there, but I may not quite make 6:30, because I'm coming from Southfield." I worked in a, in an elementary school, so I know. And so I, I don't know if I want to strike typically. I mean, because, you know, generally, the hours are the hours. However, weather, you know, traffic, it could have been an accident, you know, as we said, how it's kind of a tenuous intersection. There could be even a tornado warning where everybody's taking cover at 6:15. And it isn't over until 7. And, you know, for the protection of the children, we don't come out at 6:30 saying, you know, we're done. So, that's my comment.
And, and Mr. Hardy, I would certainly appreciate that, and that's why I would say, either I think it's worth having in there, and maybe, maybe, and it sounds like this makes sense, but if that's the case, then, I mean, Mr. Alloy is the lawyer here, and then I'm, not I, but I'm not sure how you enforce typically hours are X. Like, it just doesn't, it doesn't seem effective.
The, the word is, is typical is difficult to enforce, I would agree.
So maybe, maybe it's better just to leave B, I think the petitioner has the right motive in mind, but-
If you just say the days and hours of operation will be as follows, 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., I think that meets what you're looking for. That has been offered by the petitioner, that should be sufficient.
If the petitioner is, is okay with that and they're offering it, that would be, that would be my recommendation. I would, I would make a motion to recommend approval when, when it's appropriate to make motions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, is there anyone else? Then, uh-
That, that would be part of the motion that I would make, just so you know, or whoever would make a motion.
Would you like to make the motion, Mr. Tuckfield? Before, excuse, question. Mr. Bentley had indicated, sir, that when you spoke, can you please state your name again, just for the record, so we would have it? Right, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, no, that's the gentleman in the audience, I'm sorry.
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing. Sean Connolly, thank you. And your address, please? Thank you. Okay, and sir, I think you made a comment, and I don't think we have your name and address either, so.
Jeff Schmitz, JS Capital, The Developer, 155 Romeo Road, Rochester, Michigan, 48307.
Okay, all right. At this time, do we have a motion for conditional rezoning of- At this time, do we have a motion for conditional rezoning of Premier Academy? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussions, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the conditional rezoning for permanent parcel 0826351011. Should I be doing these two parcels together or separately?
Together.
Together. 011 and 012, based on the proposed use better matching with the surrounding developments and the recommendations of our staff. And also, that the agreement would reflect the petitioner allowing the changes to clarify the hours of operations per the discussion we had.
Okay, motion by Mr. Tuckfield. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. Mr. Bentley, will you please call the rule?
I will. Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Provenzano?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes.
Okay, all ayes, motion passes. All right, next item on the list is site plan, Premier Academy. Permanent parcel 0826351011 slash 012, located on the northeast corner of 21 Mile Road and Card, Section 26, JS Capital Group petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Same parcel, or parcels, that we were just discussing. Now, they're looking for an approval of their site plan. And going through it, they do have a detention basin, which is required, north of their parking lot is where they are locating that. Our ordinance does require the 5,000 square foot outdoor play area, and they were granted the variance due to the indoor and outdoor play area that they are providing. All dimensional standards, including setbacks, lot coverage, and building height, have been sufficiently met. And the other variance we mentioned earlier was with regards to parking. Typically, 85 spaces would be required, they're seeking, or they did seek a variance for 62, and that was approved at ZBA. The six-foot-high decorative masonry wall is required on the north and the east sides, and this is shown on their site plan. And the ordinance does not require a specific number of landscape features, but they are proposing a fair amount, as you see here, of green space and landscaping buffer around the property. Site plan approval is recommended at this time, conditioned on the fact that the site's conditional rezoning is approved by the board.
Okay. Petitioners, you had a presentation that you wanted to show? I believe, correct? No? Mr. Box, I think they're looking at you. And who's gonna be presenting the presentation? For the site plan, yep.
Good evening, Jeff Klat with Krieger Klat Architects, 2120 East 11 Mile in Royal Oak. Thank you for your time this evening.
Okay.
Mr. Box did an excellent job describing the site in the project, so I can be even a bit more brief. But, Mr. Box, if you can jump to our site plan, which is maybe a handful of slides in. We made it more confusing with fancy fly-ins. There we go, so this is our proposed site plan, as you can see. Our orientation's a bit different, we have north to the left-hand side. So, as you can see, the building is located central to the site. We have 21 Mile to the right-hand side and Card Road to the bottom. So, the building is right in the center of the site. The gray shaded space that represents our parking and maneuvering areas. So, we have parking to the left, we have parking area behind the building. And as was mentioned, we have a drop-off area right in front of the building. And the site has access from Card Road, which was described earlier. Although not shown green, we do have ample green space around the site, including an outdoor play area, which is just to the left of our gymnasium space. It's a secured protected area. And then, which was also mentioned, we do have a detention basin, which is required per the township on the left-hand side of the site. Yeah, apologies, we have a bunch of fly-ins there. The next slides, this is the floor plan for the site. So, again, this is pretty simplistic in form, it's a rectangular building. This is, my apologies here, this is oriented 180 degrees from the site. So, on the site plan drawing, we had our entry at the bottom of the screen, and this drawing, the entry to the building is at the top. So, that's where you enter the building, we have a vestibule area, the drop-off area is on top in this drawing. There is a central corridor in the middle of the space, and that connects us to the childcare rooms. There's five childcare rooms on this floor. Other amenities include a cafeteria area and support kitchen for the children. There's a director's office, reception area, which is adjacent to the entry. And we also have that large indoor gym space, which was mentioned on the right-hand side. So, that's for inclement weather, you know, during the winter months, we have gym space for the children. The next slide is, thank you, Josh, sorry about that, I had to make it tougher for you. This is our second floor plan, and this directly stacks on top of the first floor. And same concept, we have the central corridor, and we have six childcare rooms on this floor, so three on the top and three on the bottom. The gym area is lower in height, so we do not have a second floor for that space. So, this area is a little bit smaller in footprint. And if we could jump to the exterior slides, Josh, that'd be helpful. That would be... This one right here. So, this is, so from an exterior standpoint, our primary goal was to respect and complement the surrounding neighborhoods. We have some commercial area, like the Kroger, to the west, and we have, but most importantly, we wanted to respect the residential neighborhoods to the east. So, the building is very traditional, yet modern in appearance. You know, simple forms, clean lines around the building, very timeless materials, such as brick and limestone, and that wraps all the way around the building. So, we have brick and limestone, or brick and cast stone, I should say, around the building. To respect the residential district or neighborhood behind us, you can see some of the forms, such as the peaked roof in the middle. The windows are very similar to residential in shape and also style, with the mutton or grill pattern in the windows. So, again, we're complementing the surrounding residential. There's also some stone banding around the building to further break up the height. Yeah, that central roof piece is over our main entry. We do have a beautiful glass canopy over the front doors. Again, to hallmark the entry while providing some bit of protection for the parents as they drop their child off, or bring their child into the building. There is a small cupola in the middle of that roof. It's shown with glass, but it's really a vent for mechanical purposes, ventilation purposes. And the next few slides, this is really the same image from, this would be looking from Card Road. As you can see, that massing of the shape of the building, we really wanted to respect this. So, really, the building is no more taller than the single-family home, the two-story, single-family homes with the steep roof pitches. So, the massing steps down, it's taller in the middle, but it gets more delicate as you get to the boundary, or to the edge of the building. Then again, our gymnasium to the left, that's a single-story in height, too, so it's fairly low as we get to the perimeter. And then, as was mentioned, this was really just a comparison between the two facilities. So, the facility on the left is the Rochester Hills location, which is a much smaller site, but the building is identical in footprint. And as you can see, the site we're proposing is much larger with more parking area. So, same building, larger site, more parking, which was a benefit. And we have no issues at the Rochester Hills facility. So, that really wraps up our architectural presentation. We can answer any questions you have. We have a material board showing the brick and stone, we can show that to you as well.
This is what I explained this slide. This is the Oakland Township, and it just shows where the customers come from. And you can see, it's all pretty local, we're not dragging people from outside the area. So, with regard to traffic, we think this is, helps out with regard to traffic, because everyone is pretty much local.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Box, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, commissioners? Questions, comments on the site plan? Mr. Spatafora?
Yes, either to Mr. Klat or Mr. Schmitz. Could you please clarify the traffic flow when it comes onto the premises off of Card Road? In the site plan, I'm seeing arrows that look like the traffic flow and stacking would go counterclockwise, but then I'm also seeing arrows when you come in off of Card Road that appear to go clockwise. Could you please clarify that?
Oh, for sure, so if you look at this drawing, which is, so north is up on this plan, so the entry point is along Card Road. So, those arrows really do depict the maneuvering lanes. So, I think a typical maneuvering drive is 20 feet or 22 feet wide, I can't recall. But, yeah, so for example, if you enter from Card Road, if you go to the top, that's really two-way traffic. So, you know, a parent or staff member could maneuver around, they could go left, maneuver that area to find a parking space. But if you want to drop your child, or park along the front of the building for the drop-off lane, that is one-way traffic, so you're right, that is counterclockwise. So, you would turn right, there's the seven stacking spaces that would be to the right or closest to the building. And then, there's a drive lane that would be in this slide to the left of that. So, you would maneuver down, and you go right around the building. And the reason it's two-way traffic, or two-way lane back there is because our parking spaces are 90 degrees, or perpendicular to the lot line. So, to physically back the car out, you need that space to pull the car out, maneuver around it. But you can't go back around in a clockwise fashion. Yes, then you could maneuver either to a parking space, or you could turn left around the outdoor play area, and then exit out to Card Road, currently showing a left turn or a right turn out. I don't know if I described that well, but it's, generally speaking, you turn, it'd be counterclockwise to drop your child off.
I guess my main concern from a safety is vehicular traffic coming on the premises off of Card Road. If they choose to go to the left or the north, they can divert that way, and they'll have to be careful as far as oncoming traffic, parents that drop their children off, that might be exiting out onto Card Road. You see what I'm saying, as far as going to the left to park and all that?
It's almost suggesting that no matter what, you would turn right onto the site and maneuver around that way, or head in a counterclockwise fashion regardless?
I can understand as far as the drop-off going in a counterclockwise, it's just that diverting to the left, I'm just a little concerned with the safety. But, you know, if that model has been proven successful at the other locations, I'm sure the proprietor's taken, you know, that into consideration with the operations. If I may? Mr. Chair?
Please.
Traffic coming out here, and then shooting there, and other traffic is coming out here. I just, you know, concerned, I understand this, but it's just going up there to the left like that.
Yeah, I mean, that's a great point, and we did assess that with our engineer, who is not here this evening, but, yeah, I do see, so if, what you're suggesting, would it make more sense to you if you, for this drawing, if you turned right into the facility from Card Road, you would immediately have to turn right again in a counterclockwise fashion around the building? So, you can't make an immediate left to go into that parking field.
I mean, in your other locations, do you have the opportunity for vehicular traffic to also do the same way when they're going either clockwise or counterclockwise for drop-off and stacking? Do you have vehicular traffic going in another direction, too? So, this would be...
You have to, sir, we need you to speak into the microphone for the record, please.
The Rochester Hills site plan is almost identical to the site plan. The traffic, you enter to the right and you go around, and that's how the flow of traffic is counterclockwise. We've had no problems.
So, in Rochester Hills site, Mr. Schmidt, it's only one way going counterclockwise? Do they have the ability to turn to the left when they come in at that other location?
We do have, we have some parking. If you look to the top of the, you know, the screen there, we have parking in Rochester Hills at the top, so you could go left.
Once traffic comes in, when the traffic going to the right is for stacking and drop-off of the children?
Correct. And then, the parents that wanna walk their children in, they, you know, park, they either turn into the right, and you can go around in a counterclockwise fashion, and then come back up and park. Very similar to this layout.
Yeah, the counterclockwise, I see that, and I think that's a nice layout and a nice plan. I just, again, from safety, with vehicles on the premises, you know, going in two directions, coming out, that's just a concern that I have. But if it's been proven to work as far as your operations in the other locations, I'm fine with that.
Just a thought, if it doesn't work, but one thing to consider is, coming, if you're coming around the building there to the top, and then to be heading out is to put like a stop sign there. That way, they have to make a stop before they proceed through. I think that might help with regard to the people coming into the left.
Well, that's on private property for the premises like that, too. That would probably certainly be a help for safety reasons.
Also, when you're going counterclockwise, you don't see it, but at the top of the, at the end of the building, you see the playground area. That fence is only 40 inches and it's open, or 42 inches tall. So, you, as a driver, you can see through that area.
Sure, okay, that's a good point.
You got great visibility.
And if I could add, Mr. Spatafora, I mean, was, if everything was one way, would it be safer, possibly? But I think this type of entrance, I think a traffic engineer would say this is a decision point for a driver when they turn in. This is not that uncommon of a setup. In fact, the development kitty corner from this on Card and 21, you can pull, you can turn right into that development, and you immediately have to decide, do I wanna turn right to go to Chase Bank, or left to the pharmacy, while other cars can be coming straight to leave the property. So, it's a very common setup for developments.
With vehicular traffic kitty corner on that other side possibly being even a little bit more intensive, because the traffic coming in and out here is for one purpose only.
Correct.
And that's for the childcare, daycare, and school.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Spatafora, Mr. Bentley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The one, I guess, talking about the same drive, to me, as there was some concern about the stacking, I see this as a good layout in that, you know, someone coming off of Card could turn in, turn right. If all this, and they wanted to drop off their child, they could go past the parallel parked cars that are dropping off their kids, go right around the building, around the playground, and then, and that might stack. But that's a whole lot of cars to stack, and then pull in as cars leave, dropping off their kids. So, it seems like a round robin type thing that would be conducive for keeping the stacking off of Card Road, or out of your entrance and exit drive. So, that seems to be, that seems to work good. I did have a question on your layout. And I know this is a site plan, but it was just a curiosity thing, and more for security. So, in your first floor entrance, you have a main entrance vestibule, which I would imagine the kids, parents, everybody uses that main entrance, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there, is there any controls as to, you got somebody that you may not wanna enter in? What do you do? How is, how does this layout accommodate that with the wall separating reception from that view of the vestibule?
So, if you notice by the vestibule, when you walk into the first double doors, you can gain entrance to the building, and it's gonna take you to almost a locked cube. There's a keypad and an access panel, so only people who are authorized to get in would be able to proceed past that point. And then, we always have somebody staffed at that desk, so we can watch and just make sure no one's holding a door open, nothing like that. And heaven forbid, you know, that we have to think this way, but we do have an emergency panic system in all of our schools, so very similar to a bank. So, we have silent alarm buttons. Heaven forbid, you know, in the event of an emergency, we do have that. We can hit the silent alarm, it would automatically dispatch the authorities to help with assistance. That also triggers a silent strobe in the classrooms, alerting the teachers, an amber strobe that they know to take cover with the children.
Okay. The, oh, you don't have it up, but there is a, again, I know we're talking about site plan, but this is just safety, and I'm just trying to get my head around it. Is the wall, it's like a wing wall from the reception area into that corridor space, which blocks your view of the vestibule, seeing who's there? If, just a consideration, you may wanna make that low?
It is a low countertop.
Gotcha.
So, you can see right through, it's all glass, you can see who's in the locked vestibule, typing their code or using their access panel to get in. It's like a lower, if I was sitting at a desk like this.
And is there any view from the director's office into that vestibule?
It depends on our campus, but yeah, a window typically we've got placed in some of our campuses. And then the opening of the door is right there, being able to see who's coming in and out.
Gotcha. I think that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bentley. Anyone else?
Just a quick question.
Mr. Oliver.
Back to my playground. Do you feel, was it nineteen hundred square feet?
Correct. Almost two thousand, nineteen hundred and eighty, I think, square feet.
Close to two thousand.
Correct.
Forty by fifty, roughly?
Twenty kids.
Yeah. How many kids will be out there once?
Approximately twenty children. But we also have the indoor gymnasium, which actually is used more frequently than the exterior, as you know, we're in Michigan, so. Nine months of the year. It's pretty.
And the reason why I say that, I work a piece of property right next to a daycare and they got the luxury to be out in a, the back parking lot, they keep it all secure. And them kids just move so fast. They really, I just really forgot how fast kids move. And, you know, you got traffic in there and that's a concern of mine, but obviously you're running a business and, you know, your, your understanding of this traffic, you know, the understanding of the room you got. So that was my only concern.
Yeah, it's just similar to our Rochester Hills campus, but like you've got the full gates surrounding the playground.
We need you on the microphone. Thanks.
We do have the gates surrounding the playground and our staff is really alert with monitoring, you know, and watching what's going on. You know, not going to, we, you know, have a great team and we've got, you know, have had no issues at our Rochester facility with the same layout.
And like it's been stated, there is an indoor.
Yep. So the gym is the indoor as well, like he said, for the winter months.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? I have just one question. You alluded to Rochester Hills and it's the same design. But my question is, is this the same type of intersection as Twenty-One and Card?
I would challenge you to say it is probably three times worse.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right.
I had one more question.
Mr. Bentley has one more question.
And this is for Mr. Box. The height of the building, this, it is slightly higher than some of the samples that they had shown on their plan. I know that there's no, or at least two stories is not a limitation for CF. Is there, is there any restrictions that we, we need to make in this? Or is the elevation sufficient for the height of this building?
I think the elevation is sufficient for the height of this building. I don't know off the top of my head. I'm now looking at their plans or what they're proposing. But I know we did meet with them and go over that.
Thirty-five feet now?
And it's, I think that is the maximum, if I'm not mistaken. And the cupola is for venting purposes, as they mentioned. That is not a part of the measurement for the, for the height. It's similar to a parapet wall where there's some exceptions. Those aren't measured as part of the height of the building.
Correct.
We have the scale as compared to the residential.
Yes, we have that in our packet.
Sir, I need you, if you're going to speak, I got to have you on the microphone. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Nothing else, Mr. Bentley?
No, I think that'll do it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just had one question and one comment. The question goes back to, I think we briefly touched on it before, and Mr. Box, if you could just comment on it. Thoughts on requesting a no left-hand turn sign? Do you think that is worth here? Is it something that makes sense? What's your thoughts on that?
As far as no left-hand turns onto Card Road?
Yeah.
I think it's something that could be requested. They could put that as one of their conditions, that they'll put that sign up should they choose to do that. Again, it's not a legally binding sign. It's not something that can be enforced unless they work...
More suggestion than rules.
Yeah. Unless they work with the road department, I don't think they're going to be pulling anyone over who makes that left-hand turn out of there.
I guess to the petitioner, have you considered a no left-hand turn sign? What's your thoughts on it?
We have not. We've always followed the direction of the, you know, the county that owns those roads. They dictate that policy. If it does become a problem, we'd be open to adding one, a private no-left-hand turn lane in the future.
Okay. And my concern, we have a couple of intersections within the township. And I guess I would just, to your comment, I've gone through the intersection where your, where your other facility is in Rochester Hills. And I'm not sure that I would characterize it quite so different as you do. But that aside, we have several intersections in the township where you have strange left and right turns onto a main road. And they can get bad fast. So it's certainly a concern of mine there.
Absolutely.
I don't know that it's appropriate for me to request it, but I would just say, as you're going through the process, please be very cognizant of that. And if it makes sense, please consider it.
Absolutely.
So that'd be my question, comments on that. And then the only other thing I'd mention, and this is before we go into public comments, I think I mentioned briefly, someone in the crowd asked that we specify the zoning, which is the last item. But I just want to mention before we get into comments that on the last item, we made a recommendation to rezone per the, per the conditional rezoning, which inherent to that states CF. So I just wanted to mention that to you before we get into it. I didn't state it in the motion, but it's inherent to the motion. So with the contract we have. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else before we go to the public? All right. I'd like to open the public portion at eight oh seven. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, seconded by Mr. Bentley. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Conley? Just state your name again. Thank you.
Sean Connolly, two one seven eight zero twenty-one mile, Macomb. Thank you for clarifying that. I did note that. I didn't know if anybody else did. I was going to ask you to clarify. So thank you. Appreciate that. More so with the site plan, again, and part of all of my comments I made earlier, please, a lot of those belong here and I realize that, but I think when you talk about the site plan, sometimes it affects whether or not you want to approve the rezoning. So I did want to bring that up then. But anything I said earlier, please, I would say again. Some of the comments, I'm curious here, if the stacking is on the west side of the building, there's going to be four or five cars. There's going to be more coming in during busy periods. And it's, because of the nature of the angle, they're going to be blocking those people that are trying to go around to go to the other way. So personally, I think they should be allowed to go in and go to the left for the people that are planning to drop off their kids. I do not think they should be going around the building and increasing more traffic there. And on top of that, I think it'd be better, and they don't want to change that, I wouldn't think, but the stacking should be on the east side of the building. They can go all the way around. And then when they're stacking up along there, it's not an issue because it's got a lot more room to back up and not go out onto Card Road. I, again, I don't know where it's going to come up later. There really, it's going to be accidents and things like that, you know, deaths, I think, if the left turns are going to be allowed coming out of there. That's going to be the worst-case scenario. It's horrible. You can't get out of there. There's people that try and it's going to be a problem. And again, coming south, trying to turn left into there. Turning in won't be as bad, but it's going to cause backups. People are going to go around. People are going to block all the traffic. People are going to cut off and there's going to be a lot more. I can, I know that's coming. But if they're allowed to turn left out there, which I think they have every intention of allowing, I think there ought to be three lanes there on that Card Road where there's one coming in and two egress, one to the north, one to the south, because otherwise it's just going to keep backing up. Anybody trying to turn left, if they're allowed, it's going to back up anybody that can't go right. And that's going to increase traffic, way more backups also again. Can't read my writing there. Okay. The other question I had, I guess, is where that entry is lining up with Kroger. I don't see the layout on there. I saw the site plan, but it didn't show the building. I see this, which doesn't show the Kroger, the site plan. So I don't know if that's right across the street from the Kroger. Accidents waiting to happen. I just can't say it enough. I just concerned about that. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Okay, let's close the public portion at eight oh nine. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Bentley?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Shudo. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, we're on the site plan. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I will recommend site plan approval for Premier Academy pursuant to the comments and recommendations of our planning department and other department comments. That's permanent parcels number zero eight dash twenty-six dash three fifty-one dash zero eleven and zero twelve.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spatafora?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. Mr. Bentley?
If I, if I may, I think we need to make sure that this motion is conditioned on the fact that the conditional rezoning still needs to be approved by the Board of Trustees.
We'll add that as a condition, that the conditional rezoning has to be approved by the board to my motion.
All right. And we have your motion. And who's seconded? Mr. Oliver's seconded. Mr. Bentley, please call the roll.
Will do. Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Bentley, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
And Mr. Provazano?
Yes.
Okay, we have all ayes. Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. All right.
Good luck on that.
All right. Old business, planned unit development, general design plan, Matic, permanent parcel, zero eight three six three five three zero three three, zero eight three six three five three zero two three, zero eight three six three five three zero three zero, zero eight three six three five three zero one eight, located on the north side of Hall Road, east of North Avenue, section thirty-six. Carl Zimmerman, petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. This, this item, they are seeking to be tabled until the next meeting. I know I feel, feel like a broken record saying that. I know it's been tabled a number of times. We did meet with them again. They are still making progress. Again, I don't know, Ben, if you want to add to that, but I think they're, again, moving in the right direction. And we hope to see them at the next meeting.
All I would say is that we're collaborating on a number of outstanding issues in the PUD. And it was agreed at the meeting we had yesterday, meaning the Township Administration and the petitioner, that this item should be tabled until we can complete the items that we discussed. And we believe, we're very hopeful that at the next meeting, this will be completed.
Okay. So do we need to make a motion to table this till September seventh? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Bentley made the motion to table the PUD for Matic. Mr. Oliver supported the motion. Mr. Bentley, call the roll, please.
Yes. Mr. Bentley?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Shudo?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Provazano?
Yes.
And Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
All ayes. Motion passes. All right. Public comments on non-agenda items. As you can see, there are, there is no one in the audience, so we're good with that. Commissioners' comments. Anyone? No comments? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I actually did have one thing I just wanted to bring up. I know Mr. Skurdo and Mr. Box were good enough to send us a draft of the master plan a couple of months ago. I haven't commented on it, but I have read it. I did appreciate the work that's been done so far. There is one portion, if anybody hasn't read it so far, that specifically speaks to the goals of the master plan that I think if you haven't read, would be good to read. I know the planning department is busy and so I haven't, I know I haven't wanted to put more on their plate and I haven't said much. But I thought of all the things that we can discuss and understand about the whole document, I think that's probably one of the most important ones. So if you haven't read it, I just would encourage you to do so. I don't know when we're going to get back to it, but I just wanted to make that comment. And that was all I had.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. Now we're going to move on to the Macomb Township Board of Trustees liaison update. Mr. Charles Oliver.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to comment to the board that for the first time, we did two conditional rezonings.
Wow.
So thank our planner and we have to thank our, everyone involved in that. And it went smooth. There was no problems with it. The other thing, the July twenty-eighth meeting, we postponed the cost sharing to Romeo Plank because there was such a price increase. So they went back to the table, did some work, and they're able to come up with some better numbers. And so now it's back, moving forward, twenty-two mile road widening. We're not still certain if it's going to be a roundabout. It's not guaranteed yet, the way I understood it.
Is that the Macomb County Department of Roads came back with new numbers or?
But together, I would say.
I think basically, yeah, it's twenty-one and a half to twenty-three. And I think that they're figuring out ways to budget and to work through the project. So we know that's going to be expensive.
It is moving forward.
Where is this possible roundabout again?
The twenty-two and Romeo Plank.
Romeo Plank between twenty, twenty-one and like three quarters, right? Where the school is where that last project ended and it will continue through the twenty-two miles intersection and go up to twenty-three.
So it's moving slowly. And that's all I have.
Okay, sir.
No other questions?
Mr. Bentley, did you have a question for earlier?
I did. I did. Since we're talking twenty-two mile road, what is the status of the extension of that twenty-two mile road to Fairchild? Because that was a big issue and wondered if...
Two Fairchild?
I think he's talking about Mustang, right by Mustang Drive.
That's still...
I mean, we've got emergency vehicles going.
Yeah, yeah. It's still an issue. It's, I'm sure it's on the radar, but it's not a top priority, you know. About it.
Not as much as a cul-de-sac or, I mean, a white one?
Probably not, yeah. They know the problem there. But again, it's, you know, money. And I think I stated at the last meeting, what we expected a million dollars to do in funding, it's about half of that now. So bring the trillions on from DC because we'll need them.
Gotcha.
Well, I thank you for that, Mr. Oliver.
You're much welcome.
And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Oliver. ZBA report, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we did have a meeting earlier this month. We did see the development that we looked at this evening at Twenty-One and Card. And one of the things I did want to mention in that, and I don't actually think I've talked to Josh about this, but one of the jobs of the ZBA is to pass on to the planning commission and obviously the planning department's going to see this as well as things that might need to be tweaked. We did give a variance for play area. And I think one of the things that was obvious just in my review of it is that our ordinance probably needs to be changed with regards to play area. We gave a variance. There was some discussion on it. I don't know that everybody was on the same page of what to do. But one thing that was clear is that the state requirements for a play area is different than our requirements and substantially so. So I think we need to at least readdress it, determine if that is in fact what we want to do. And if it is what we want to do, then we probably need to stick to it. And if it's not what we want to do, we probably need to adjust it. So it is one thing that we ran across. I'm sure it's one of a lot of things, but I did want to bring it up and just forward it on to Josh. That's probably something we want to earmark for the inevitable ordinance rework. So beyond that, I believe we have a meeting next month. And I believe we have more people calling. So the ZBA is staying pretty busy at the moment. That's all I have.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Tuckfield. Planning Department items?
Yeah, I have a couple. And I think Dave has one as well. First, I guess I'll respond to Mr. Tuckfield's comment there. With regards to the play area, he's correct. Our ordinance has a significantly higher requirement for outdoor play area than what is required by the state of Michigan. But additionally, our ordinance does not tie that back to any other criteria, meaning size of the building or how many students... or how many students are in the building, so, you know, a building that might have thirty children in it requires a five thousand square foot play area, and a building that might have three hundred children in it requires the same five thousand square foot. So there's no basis on, on which to, to lower that, other than granting a variance. The second thing I wanted to comment on, the planning, the master plan process, we had a number of items last fall where we met with the public, of course, it was via Zoom at that point. We are excited to be going to the public again later in September. We're going to do an open house at the Parks and Rec facility. I think we have a date secure, I'm not going to say it yet because it's not a hundred percent, but it's going to be, you know, kind of a town hall, open, you know, open house style presentation. We might make a presentation two or three times throughout the course of an afternoon, something like a, you know, four PM to eight PM type thing, and some stations where they can go and learn the different facets of the process. So we are excited to, to be having that at the end of September. And then I think Dave has an item?
Yeah, two items.
Oh, two items.
Two items. First one is to play off what Aaron just mentioned, we are doing right now an audit of the zoning ordinance. We're starting it, we expect it to be done in about thirty days, we're going section by section and trying to see where conflicts are and where they're not. This is just a general audit in terms of process and dimensions. We already have been working with the building department for about a year, we've got a list of about fifteen already. We've already tackled the sign code, as you know, the traditional neighborhood development, we already tackled that in draft form, so we're well underway, but we're trying to pull things together. So we welcome anybody on this commission, if you found something along the way that you've seen conflicts, please email them to us, so we can get that in the audit right now. The second item we're working on is our mass rezoning of the R1S, single-family parcels to the R1, or it could be a number of items. We're looking at doing these in six phases. The first phase, so the first phase will happen on September seventh. These will be, majority of parcels will be along Fairchild, along the very east edge of the township. All these parcels will be rezoned from R1S to R1. Phase two will happen two weeks later, which would be September the.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. And that's going to be the area along North Avenue. The third phase, we're going to start moving westward, we're going to do Hayes and possibly Broughton in there. Phase four will be Romeo Plank, that'll be October. In November, we're going to do a phase five, which will be the R1S categories to other zoning districts. And then we're going to do a phase six, we're going to do a mop up. If there's something along the way you want to delay a rezoning on, we're going to take that up in phase six. We've got some other remnant parcels that we're seeing, because of the future land use, they were still modifying, so we're leaving that open. Some of the things I want to point out, because we had a number of residents calling already, the benefits of the R1S. R1S allows 1.45 units per acre, R1, which we're going to, allows three units per acre. In essence, R1, I forget what the thing is, I think it's eight, R1 allows one house per eight thousand four hundred square feet, and R1S allows one house per thirty thousand square feet. And the R1S does not really match up with any master plan categories we have or any other documents that we have, it's just in there for some reason, we don't know why. We do see four benefits, as residents call. The first benefit is the property can continue as is. There's no change whatsoever. Just because they're getting a little number, the S taken off, their little number on the zoning map, there's no change whatsoever. Also, the property can be sold as is. There's no, there's no penalty for selling it, just because the zoning changed. It's continuing as R1S and can continue, it still will meet R1 categories. The third item is there isn't really, because of the zoning changes, doesn't mean there's additional taxes going on the property, because it's based on the unit on there. If someone develops a property, that changes. If no one touches the property, the tax rate's not going to change at all. And the fourth item is these properties are property, property values are likely to increase if they ever want to sell their properties, because now all of a sudden, they're getting three units per every acre that they own, as opposed to like 1.45, one and a half units for every parcel. So it's real, we see this as a benefit, it kind of whittles down the zoning ordinance, gets one more district out of there that we don't really see a need for. And that's why I want to point that out. Yes.
I just had a question. The R1S being 1.5 units per acre, right?
Yes.
And if, let's say it's agricultural, I mean, its current use is agricultural, is every R1S, regardless of what its use is currently, going to change to R1? Or would it go to agricultural, if it makes more sense?
We're looking at going to R1.
I think to clarify, not all of them are going to R1, there are actually some that, including the one that was in discussion tonight. Now, they're, they're going to be here on their own to rezone commercial. Should that be denied, we would probably seek that to be an industrial parcel, adjacent to the industrial district, fits with the corridor. So there are some, that's, and he mentioned phases five and six are kind of those outliers, but phases one, two, three, and four, so essentially your next four meetings, those are all going from R1S to R1. I don't think there's anything that would be rezoned, I guess, in reverse, to take it back to agriculture. If they have agricultural uses on the property, that can continue. This rezoning is not going to change the fact that it's used as ag right now, that can continue.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thank you, fellas. Next item, motion to adjourn.